I now call the June ninth, two thousand and fifteen work session of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Larson lead us in the pledge of allegiance? After that, I'll say a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly father, as we deliberate this evening and discuss the issues coming before the city government with regards to road construction, pray for thy spirit to guide and direct us so that we might have insight and understanding equal to our task, that we might be able to ask intelligent questions and that we will be educated and strengthened in our understanding of process whereby development takes place in our community, that we protect the rights of those who own the land look out for the needs of people who will own it in the future. Ask this humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Would the city secretary please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilmember Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilmember Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
And I'm here and I would entertain a motion to excuse councilmembers Fabiana and Martinez.
Still moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion with that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I declare that we have a quorum and the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition of the recognition for rich heart after item seven.
Your honor, I would move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is established. Item number seven is a discussion of proposed three-quarter street improvements. Public Works Directors' report, please.
Thank you, your honor. As we work through this report, I'd like to remind you this is work session and we are open to have your discussion, your questions, any ability that you want to explore, code, et cetera, et cetera, we are free to do. As we broach this topic, perhaps I'll just work through the staff report that you received last week and also to bring the public up to speed who are watching at home. At the March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen council meeting, Councilmember Canaan proposed a topic of discussion for the council to consider. This topic centered on a current city ordinance where applicants for development are required to place curb and gutter and pave one half of unpaved streets adjacent to their planned development. In his proposal, Councilman Canaan suggested the council consider amending the existing ordinance to require three-quarter street improvements rather than half-street improvements, meaning applicants for development would be required to place concrete improvements abutting their development and pave the entire width of the street rather than only paving from the center line towards their abutting property. Upon initial consideration of this proposal, the city council motioned and directed city staff to present this topic during a work session. That's why we're here tonight. Some of the impetus behind this desire to discuss this code comes from recent elementary schools being developed in the city of Riverton. When Aspen Park School was built, there were several complications regarding the extent to which the school district would be required to make off-site improvements. Unfortunately, these complications led to the city investing significant unbudgeted funds towards the off-site improvements servicing that school. When the Willow Creek School was being proposed for construction, the topic of off-site improvements was again explored. Specifically, the relationship of how impacts created by the new development would affect off-site improvements. According to city code, the only request the city could legitimately make of the school district was to improve and pave half the frontage abutting their new site. Consequently, pressure could have been placed on the city to pave and finish any remaining off-site improvements associated with that. Fortunately, the school district and the school facilities commission worked very well with the city and chose to make several off-site improvements of their own accord, extending past the extremities of their development and the property lines. As you're aware, they are going to be paving an extension of Major Avenue and also Monroe Avenue, sufficiently providing an access and egress to the school and also accommodating for the large impacts that that development is going to make on those streets. If they were left unpaved, we would have issues of dust control and then large maintenance concerns in the future. So that was really kind of the impetus behind bringing this up and discussing it as a council and having staff look into these options. As we facilitate this discussion, a few potential questions should probably be in your mind and they are again listed in the staff report, but I would like to reiterate them, help spur any thoughts that you may. Some of these questions, for example, are what exactly is the definition of a half-street improvement or a three-quarter street improvement? Would an amendment to this definition allow for exemptions based on the size of development, the impact they make, the type of use they're having, et cetera, et cetera? Could delay agreements, fees in lieu, or recapture agreements be applied to improvements that were required by future developments? Is there a difference between development requirements for subdivisions and individual lot development? Just a few questions to consider as we work through this. The code in question, as you're aware and you have it before you, is in Title fifteen of the municipal code. Title fifteen really is dealing with buildings and construction, it's not for subdivisions. And in Title fifteen, if you look at section fifteen, twenty, and zero-five-zero, A two, it really deals with these off-site improvements. That specific question really deals with receiving a building permit. So simply stated, this code helps dictate how a developer or a person who wants to improve their property can receive a building permit. As part of those requirements, it states, and I won't read all of this, but it states, "The applicant agrees to install curbs and gutters along adjacent streets not having curbs and gutters to pave one-half the width of unpaved streets or the full width of alleys contiguous to the tract to be developed in accordance with the standards applicable to the types of developments planned." And it goes on to require other utility improvements such as sewer and water, really dealing with half-street definition. So, in accordance with this section of code, this title, and it states it can be any zoning restriction, so whether it be commercial, residential, whatever zone that this development is occurring under, there is a requirement to pave half the width of the street and only the concrete, curbs, and gutter adjacent to their property. I think for us to really consider how we're going to address this, I think we need to understand what does a half-street improvement include? There's no real definition currently in our code. If you look in that title in that chapter, there's usually a section that defines certain terms used in that code. There are no definitions defining street improvement, half-street improvement, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's natural to assume that a half-width street improvement is from the center line of the road or the proposed road towards the property development. Again, I think there needs to be a definition made against this code. And in fact, as staff was researching how other cities and municipalities apply this improvement upon developments, half-street, three-quarter street, four-quarter street, it was discovered that there were several communities in Oregon that actually defined a half-street improvement similar to how Councilman Canaan requested a three-quarter street. Several examples of these ordinances are listed in your packet. I won't necessarily go through and read them all, but each one of them, there are four examples from different communities in Oregon, define that half-street improvement as basically providing two lanes of travel. So a half-street to them is not paving to the center line of the road, but providing enough pavement to allow for two lanes of travel, a minimum amount, and it varied from community to community, but in my reading of it and also as I would recommend to you as a consideration, I would consider defining the half-street improvement similar to what a three-quarter street improvement would be interpreted as, therefore requiring at least two lanes of travel passing in opposite directions paved with asphalt and a minimum of twenty-four feet of asphalt. That minimum requirement is the bare minimum that has to be completed by this developer of property, whether it be an individual lot or subdivision lot. I'll leave it at that.
Are you ready? Yeah. Ask away. I think that's, I think that's what we are going to do, right?
I think, I think the more open we make this, the better we're able to cover the topic. So please feel free to interject at any time and I think we're at a great point now to talk about.
Mr. Larson.
So my understanding is that twenty-four, twenty-four inch total from blacktop to blacktop, the edge of concrete to the drain or curb is what we're talking about as two directions of travel. So if I'm standing in the middle of the road and there's two cars coming, one going left, one going right, there are enough space for each one of those to travel without hitting me being in the middle of the road because there's twelve feet that the one is going and twelve feet which the one is coming.
Your honor, that would be correct. And if you turn to the second page of the handout that was distributed to you today, that kind of will give you an illustration of what we're talking about. Sometimes pictures speak louder than words. The top illustration demonstrates that existing interpretation, basically, basically moving from the center line and improving towards the property development with curb and gutter.
But it doesn't have curb and, excuse me, I'm not through yet. But that picture does not have curb and gutter on both sides, it only has it on one.
Your honor, that is correct. That is correct. Our current code only requires it on the side of the developer, the property developer, the applicant, I want to call them.
But if it's a street going through a middle of the property and the developer owns both sides, i.e., both sides have to have pavement and curb, correct?
That's correct and that is better covered under Title sixteen of our code, which is subdivisions, where you're talking about a developer coming in, purchasing a large tract of land and then plating it with several different lots that he may or she may thereby sell later. As part of that, they're going to have to also include a plating of streets, a definition of streets, and that's very well defined in our Title sixteen. It defines the corridors for residential streets, the minimum easements for residential streets, collector's streets, arterial streets. So in your example, if a developer comes in and he owns both sides of that street, he would be required to make those improvements per Title sixteen, which is a little bit different than what we're talking about. This, maybe to help differentiate in your minds. Title fifteen, I really see that as applying to an individual lot being developed, whether it be A B C Construction deciding to put a warehouse on a certain parcel of land.
No, 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 let's not mix it up with, let's just speak residential.
Well, if we want to speak residential, but it would apply to the commercial, but if John Doe, for example, purchases tract or a piece of land, just one property, he's not subdividing that property, he's purchasing one piece of property. For our code, to get his building permit, he has to make the improvements as defined in section fifteen, twenty, zero-five, which is curb and gutter running along his property on that side of that corridor, that unimproved road. It also defines as it stands to pave half of that.
Okay, so I have, so maybe, maybe this. Okay, so what is a real street? Okay, is a real street curb and gutter with twenty-four foot of asphalt? Or is a real street curb and gutter, a ten-foot parking lane on either side of the street with twenty-four foot of asphalt in between, two lanes of traffic? See, so the whole right-of-way comes up to sixty feet? Fifty, fifty in residential, sixty in commercial.
So generally, when we're talking about corridors, there are different right-of-way definitions. Sixty feet is pretty common, but you usually have involved in that at least forty-two feet of paved surface. That includes travel lanes and a shoulder and curbs and gutter and usually a sidewalk. Now again, that's if you're developing a new subdivision and putting in new streets that do not exist yet. There are codes that define how you can install those streets or how you should install those streets. Those are again found in Title sixteen. But this, this situation that we're talking about is where there's already a street corridor defined. You're not creating a new street, you're just purchasing a property abutting, existing, unimproved street. So a street that's been platted, a street that's defined but is not yet paved. We have several of those in our community, some unpaved streets. And say for example, John Doe goes out and buys a piece of property along that existing street, but it's an unpaved street. He then has the requirement to bring at least adjacent to his property, that street up to a certain standard. Right now, it requires half-street of pavement, gutter just through the length of his property, so contiguous to his property. So it is a little complicated because you have to almost differentiate between subdivision development, where you would be creating and plating new streets. There are several codes and requirements associated to that because you're developing new streets. So that's, that's one consideration. I think we have to separate ourselves from that right now. And with this code, Title fifteen, which is building and construction, it really only deals with construction that's going on for a piece of property that's already on a paved. Am I muddying the water or am I helping?
This is, okay, so, all right, so then, okay, I'm a couple days ago I was on, is it called River Lane? It goes from the villages down along the, below the golf course, River something. Riverside? Okay, so here's a street that's probably, it's paved, twenty-four foot wide, there's no curb and gutter. Okay, so if you're going to park along the side of the street, you pull out into the borrowed ditch, which is grass, but it's mowed and, well, some of it's mowed. And, and so, but that's in the side to city limits and it's a subdivision. Okay, if we go to Spencer, which we annexed into the city, okay, some of those streets weren't even paved and, and some of them are, but there is no curb and gutter. And if you were to pave, I think in most cases, the streets is high or higher than the lawns. Okay, so then if you were to put curb and gutter in, then it would be a retaining wall, a dike on everybody's front yard. Okay, and then I read in, so maybe this is, see, the residential thing might be a complication. The other issue that, that I think about with the Aspen Park School is that they intentionally built that outside the city limits so they wouldn't have to mess with us. So then they get it built outside the city limits and they do whatever it is they want. Then they come to the city and say, annex us. Okay, so then what do you do? Do you take it as it is? I think that's what we wound up having to do, is take it as it is.
We have it the property owners.
Yes.
Next to that school, got a big sharp hole stuck up there.
I, I, I understand that, I understand that completely. And, and so what happens to us is that, I guess my concern is, is that what happens to us is that a lot of the development that the city of Riverton experiences actually is taking place outside the city limits and then they come in with things that don't meet code and want to be
Anixed.
Anixed.
It is a complication, your honor. And to cross that bridge when we get there, you can actually make actions on those properties prior to annexing them. And if the council so chooses, of course, paving and installing improvements is very expensive and requiring that of school, neighborhood, commercial district prior to being annexed is somewhat of a difficult question to answer and it's almost something that you have to consider case by case.
See, so, so that's, so then that results in, well, maybe it's a different standard, but as you drive around Riverton, different neighborhoods have different street, sidewalk, curb, gutter, whatever. You know, some places, you've got a park, parkway strip that must be ten or fifteen feet wide between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. And in other places, they, the sidewalks immediately adjacent to the, to the curb and gutter. So I see lots of differences here in the way that that's done and maybe that's simply reflective of the code at the time that those subdivisions were created and and so I guess my, my concern is when I look at the picture, okay, even when we say we're going to do a three-quarter section, okay, which is twenty-four feet wide.
Minimum of.
Minimum, okay, we still haven't, we still haven't gotten to the full width of the street.
That is correct, but you are at least allowing for two lanes of travel. On those two illustrations, the top one for the proposed interpretation shows that cross-section where you're providing two twelve-foot lanes. So that's, that's an allowable length, a safe length for crossing traffic. However, if you look below, a lot of times a corridor is going to include a shoulder or something that is a right-of-way larger than what that twenty-four foot of pavement would be. So therefore, if you look at the bottom one, we're still requiring the pavement of two twelve-foot lanes, but it's also including that pavement of shoulder leading up to the abutting property.
Right, so then, when the, when the street on the other side develops, that guy's going to have to put in a shoulder as well as the curb and gutter.
Correct.
Okay, and we're talking commercial? I see this is, okay, so if we go, I'm just, I'm thinking Monroe, East Monroe, a lot of commercial buildings down there.
The industrial park, the airport.
Industrial, yeah, no curb and gutter.
If you look at the attachment, this includes the full code. So this is where it says under subtitle A, it basically says on the last line, if you read "or in connection with the commencement of any permitted or conditional zone used as described in Title seventeen." So for any zone, that's residential, commercial, industrial, these off-site improvements required to receive a building permit are applicable to any development within any zone, whether it be commercial, residential, which does make sense because if, if someone purchases a piece of property on an unimproved area where a street has been platted, but it's unimproved, and it's the same issue really, we're looking at it from thirty thousand feet, whether it's commercial or residential or industrial. They're still developing on unimproved.
Your honor?
Mr. Bailey.
I guess, to me, so that we can accommodate the different street widths, I think better language would be that pave twelve foot on the far side of the center line and entire amount on their side of the center line. This is really, I think, what we're trying to accomplish, so that we have two lanes of traffic and a shoulder, if applicable, and a curb, and a curb and gutter. So that in these areas where we have, we need a parking lane or whatever we need, we have a fifty-foot street instead of a twenty-four-foot street, we can accommodate that.
I mean, there's, there's a there's a, there's a magazine that we get, okay, that talks about development. You know, I think the Realtors put it out. And one of the things that, that one of those articles that I read several years ago talked about was that in subdivisions, getting away from curb and gutter and sidewalk and putting in roads that are only twenty-four feet wide paved with the grass right up to it and allowing no parking along the road. Everybody is expected to have off-street parking for their vehicles so that, but then, and then, and then make those roads kind of curvy and, and what that does then is it slows traffic through the subdivision and you know, so it's a, it's a change and at the same time reduces the cost of development.
See, the real cost, it doesn't cover, doesn't even care. It just does. You're the developer, you pay it. Real cost is the blacktop. Curb and gutter costs you a dollar, dollar and a quarter. Blacktop costs a lot more. But when you do it this way, either way that you've spoken of, the, the developed side pays the, the lion's share and the undeveloped side comes back in and does it for a dollar a foot. So he's got his put in for a dollar a foot, the rest of it has flipped the bill for thirty thousand dollars. The other guy pays three hundred.
Sir?
Mr. Canaan.
And, you know, when I, when I was talking to Mr. Butterfield about this, I forget, what do you call it, recapture? That when the same developer has, is forced to extend the water line through his property and the sewer line through his property and then later on I come in and tap into that existing thing, that there is a way that that initial developer gets reimbursed for that cost. And, and we talked about doing the same type of thing for this, so that the guy that you build on the west side of the road, paved the whole thing and then I later on, you later come in and build on the, on the west, on the east side, that I just don't get a road for free. That, again, we did not want that to happen, that we wanted there to be some type of formula when that second guy came in, rather than just putting in a curb and gutter and walking away with a smile, that he again would have to somehow, whatever the formula, right formula would be, to kick into that initial. whatever the formula, right formula would be, to kick into that initial paving, so that again, that, that initial developer didn't get stuck with that entire bill. I think he calls it recapture, I think was the word that they used.
Your honor, there, there are several different terms for that, but recapture is a common one used here in Wyoming.
Cost me ten thousand dollars, put in the gas line, and I had five years over recapture. I would hope there would be no time limits, because the interesting thing in Wyoming is. Energy booms. Take longer than five years. So this recapture, I missed it totally. I sold all the lots, but it was over the period of time, so when I went to the gas company. Sorry, Mr. Larson.
Your honor?
Mr. Bailey.
I would like to see our city attorney check and see if we can make the recapture unlimited, because I agree, I don't think it should expire. You spent that money, even if it's fifteen years later, I think you ought to get some of it back, even though you're not gonna get your interest or anything, but at least you'd get.
Fair's fair.
I, I think fair's fair.
I, I guess my, my concern is, is that, is that this does place quite a burden on a developer. He, I mean, he's, he's gotta come up with cash or credit to, to do that upfront.
Yeah, you don't get credit.
Okay, so you gotta have the cash.
You gotta.
Okay, so you put that up, and then how long is this, the lots that you have? Casper Concrete was here in nineteen eighty? Okay, so what are we, are we thirty years out?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we've made, you know, that guy's made an investment, okay, and thirty years later, we still don't have the lots sold.
That is a complication, and I've talked to several municipalities, in-state and out-of-state, and every city deals with this question, every city deals with these complications. And just regarding recaptures in general, one thing you have to consider is if you do an unlimited or a thirty-year or forty-year recapture agreement on pavement, that pavement's already degraded to a point that it's not there anymore after forty years. So there, there's something.
Have to rebuild it anyhow.
Yeah. So, but you're bringing up the main question. And when you talk about subdivisions, again, a developer who subdivides a large area, maybe is able to do a residential sixty-lot, forty, or twenty-lot development, each one of those parcels of property, he sells as a profit and also sells them to cover the cost of installing those initial improvements. Those improvements are what bringing people, is what brings people in to buy those properties. If I'm gonna go out and buy a house, it's much more cost-effective for me to buy a house in an area that's been already subdivided and platted by a developer, brought in power, who's brought in sewer and water, who's also paved the street and provided accommodations for stormwater, than it is for me to buy a parcel of land in a totally unimproved area where I have to do that all. So the developer, on those circumstances, does receive his return on investment when he sells each piece of property. But the big question, and you're, you're all hinting at it, when we consider Title Fifteen, which isn't about subdivisions, it's just about individual lot requirements, let me play out a scenario to you. Say on a, a certain corridor where a street is already platted, but it's unimproved. Picture it in your mind, and for some reason, this commercial developer, this residential developer really likes a piece of land that's right dead center in the middle. How much sense does it make to make that person pave from his property line, the end of his property line, and then for a half a mile going one direction, there's an, an improved road, half a mile going in the other direction, unimproved road, that's a major complication. And it's a complication that every city and town deals with. And there are different strategies to still, um, improve your city, to still, um, require those off-site improvements, but also to be fair to that person developing. And some of these strategies I've spoken with, with other planning directors and public works directors are, are the following. The first of which is already covered in our code. So if you look at Title Fifteen, Twenty, Oh Five Oh again, and then number two, so it's A two, it's on that front page, right there at the very bottom, it starts with four lines up, it says, however, the city may require the developer to enter into an improvement district agreement, excuse me, or provide cash escrow payments equal to the, that amount determined to be estimated, struggling, determined to be the estimated cost for installation of curbs, gutters, and street paving, when it is determined that a delay is appropriate prior to the commencement of the construction of these improvements. What's that saying? In that circumstance, I was bringing up to you, you know, you picture it in your mind, you got a developer right in the middle of that area of land. Not only is it a patchwork development, literally a patchwork of pavement as that develops over the next thirty, forty years, but it's a maintenance nightmare for my crews. So it does not make sense, per se, to require that improvement to be made of that developer applicant at that time. Therefore, you can do two things. You can have a development agreement where you say, at some point in time in the future, when the city determines that a special improvement district should be entered into in order to make these off-site improvements, you as a developer, as part of this developer agreement, waive the right to petition the special improvement district. What does that mean? So the next thirty years, different properties all develop, and all of a sudden you have seventy-five percent of those properties sold and developed. Now it makes a little bit more sense to pave that road, because right now you have more traffic, you have more impact, and it's just blowing out an unimproved, unpaved road. Plus you have stormwater considerations to, to think about. So at that time, you enter a special improvement district to pave those roads. Each of those abutting property owners participate in that, help pay for that. And by requiring in that developer agreement that they waive their ability to protest the develop, the creation of that special improvement district, it ensures that each one of those property owners pays their fair share and they participate. That way, thirty percent of them who say, yeah, great, I wanna pave the street, let's do it, and then sixty percent of them say, no, and then ten percent don't even care, it still shifts the burden disproportionately upon the ones who want the pavement. That's one option, a special improvement district. The second option, which is already mentioned in our code, is what is oftentimes referred to as a deferral agreement or a delay agreement. This is where, with the coordination of the city, there is an establishment of cost, improve those off-site areas. So come up with a cost to put in that curb and gutter, you come up with a cost for the asphalt, which is expensive, it's true. And then you put that into an escrow account managed by the city, and as each property is developed, that escrow, escrow account grows and at a point in time in the future where there's enough money to pave it, or when the city says, okay, there's sixty percent of the money in here to pave it, you agree to pay the next forty percent, the city can make that agreement. That's also in our code in another section. We can then use that escrow account, money put upfront, it's almost a fee in lieu of making that, the original improvements. And they're delayed, and so at one point in time, when it does make sense to improve that roadway, there's money available in an account paid for by each of the property owners or abutting that cor. That's two, not complicated. The third one is probably the least, um, enjoyable for the developer, is to require the developer, that person right there in the middle of that corridor, all by himself, and he's developing that half-mile one way or the other. You require that person to go from the nearest improved area, so where the edge of pavement stops, required to take that pavement all the way up to the edge and through their property line. To do that, you really have to have in place a recapture agreement. This is something that the city of Evanston does constantly, and that's their preferred method, that's what's in the code, is they set up these recapture agreements, say, okay, developer, you have to bring in stormwater, water, sewer, street, curb, all the way up to and through your property. And then you have a, um, a recapture agreement that everyone else who develops along that corridor that you just improved with your money will pay you back. Now, they have a ten-year clause on that, so it does expire in ten years, which that's a, that's a risk, and that might be something this council might not be amenable to at this time either. Because that is a very large upfront cost on this developer. If I'm looking to build my dream home, I just cut out some of the improvements I wanted on my own dream home just so I could pay the way leading up to that dream home. So that, that's the third option. So you have a recapture agreement, you have a delay agreement where you collect cash upfront, put it in an account, or you have a waiver where they sign that they will agree to participate in a special improvement district at some time in the future, if and when that cor. How's that for complicated?
Yeah. Your honor?
Mr. Bailey. I guess, after sitting on planning commission for quite a while, unpalatable as it seems, I think the third option probably is the best. Because in the past, that people try to do some of this spotty development, it's always the excuse of, well, I shouldn't have to do any of this because my neighbors on both sides don't have it. And then pretty soon you have a whole development done, and everybody has the same excuse, which is, my neighbor doesn't have curb and gutter, my neighbor doesn't have a paved street. Pretty soon you end up, and then you can't get them to agree to a assessment district to bring it up spec, and then the city's stuck holding the bag. And I think also it creates the incentive to grow these developments in a slow and easy fashion, from the center out, if you wanna call it that, or from the end to the other end, rather than this one here, one here, one here, one here, and hoping that you can connect all the dots eventually. I think that's a normal way of doing a subdivision, you know, they'll go in and do a subdivision, have sixty lots, or they sell ten, pave curb, gutter, sidewalk on those ten, and then sell ten more and pay, you know, do it in a more controlled fashion, you know, in phases, if you wanna call it that. I think that, to me, seems more palatable than them having to pay upfront and not getting it, which doesn't seem fair. And there's, there's times when this is not gonna be as palatable as others, but I think.
Marsh, um, those two examples that you cited, Evanston, you could cite a third, a second one, Pinedale, and you could cite, uh, Gillette, and all of those have one thing in common that we don't have. Income coming from industrial sites outside of the site of the town. All of those are, um, support cities for natural gas, coal, and, um, the reason they're going out farther is because their equipment requires it. What they're dealing in is matsus and come on, big, big, big pieces of equipment that the standard lumberyard conversion wouldn't help. So they get out there, they buy a piece of land with a, a easement to it, and Mr. Bailey is correct. If they, in the future, are going to do that, by the time that they're there, they're established or they're not in business. I mean, if Mr. Bailey and, uh, Tires R Us down the street from him and all those, those are established businesses and escrowing from the past to the future, but at the current, if, if, uh, the city of Riverton said, uh, we wanna extend federal now past Bailey's Oil, um, thirty years ago, maybe, jeez, your dad would have said, not heck no, but never. And now, he's established, and it's, it's, it's just gonna be part of the figure into the profit and loss. And that's the, he's correct. The best way to do that is future, when it's established and, uh, well, Big, uh, Tires R Us doesn't have any, and they're operating okay, and mine's okay, and every, and it's not. But those towns that you've cited are all industrial-based, natural gas, uh, hub centers. And, 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 and you can only use the example of, of, um, industrial sites, because that's exactly what they've done. They've had to have fifty acres to put in a, a bunch of pipe and et cetera. You look on the outside of, uh, Ca, of Casper, and all of those industrial sites are heavy. They have roads in front of them, because that's how you got to the center of town, was on that road. But, uh, the least palatable is the best one. The acknowledging that, in some day, we will have this, this gas field from Chishonee to Casper with four to fifty thousand wells going, and we will be in the same situation, and the easiest way to do it is that way. It is. That's the preferred way.
Mr. Bailey, and, and I guess also to me, if, you know, Kyle decides he wants to build his dream home, and he wants to build it out in the middle of nowhere, but he wants curb, gutter, sidewalk, sewer, water, all that, then he's gotta bite the bullet and do that, or he can pick a lot closer. And I'm fine with giving him a recapture, so that if ten other people get in between him and the development, they have to pay their share, and I think we could extend that out as long as legally available. Even if it's ten years or twenty years, I think it still ought to be recaptured, because it should ride for free. But I think it just makes it to where, if somebody decides to do that development that's way beyond the services, they have to just figure that into their cost of building their project.
So attached in your handout are, are examples of the codes, this is the last two pages of our current recapture agreement approved for water and sewer. So you can look at that for your own reference, but basically, we have something in place for water and sewer improvements, but for nothing else. And that's actually, if I remember, it's a five-year recapture in our current code. We can definitely explore the idea of doing recapture agreements for other improvements, not including water and sewer. And it just kinda depends on, when we look at this holistically, how does the council want to see its city develop over time? Without some type of uniform code, you, you really will see a patchwork of development, which sometimes doesn't meet, which, um, the mayor cited a great example of, you know, if you try and go back later in some of these areas, if the crown of the road was never established, if the flow line for the curb was never established, one property might have built their home at an elevation of plus ten, and another might have built their home at an elevation of minus ten. So you have to kind of find that somewhere, and so that's why coming up with some of these, codes to help with development, protect us long-term for development. Impervious runoff, all of that is, is something that the city has to handle. You have to help anyone developing come to a common accord, play by the same rules as everyone else, so that our city is amenable to how the council chooses it should look. And that, that can be overly designed, it can be underly designed, it can be a patchwork. Um, or cohesive, it, it's really up to the council how they choose to do that. Several other communities, Sheridan, Cody, up to Green River, they all struggle with the same thing, and they've gone through similar issues where, like Evanston's, they've required the applicant, the building applicant, to pave up to and through their property. Um, others, it's, it's really Cody's preference to do an agreement in the development agreement to waive that special improvement district clause. So later, an improvement district could be made, and then those developers along that corridor, or later development. There are different ways each community is handling this, but they, they sit, they still deal with the same questions you're having of, how is it equitable to every person developing a piece of land? Is it equitable for one piece of use or one property to do all these off-site improvements, and then another to free-ride off of them? Is it equitable to say, well, housing doesn't really apply, but commercial applies? So it's, it's a challenge of equitably applying it across all applicants. And again, I do wanna distinguish, it gets complicated when you start thinking about it from a subdivision aspect, and I, I encourage you not to think about it from that side of things, because there are already codes in place for subdivisions of property, for subdivisions of land, corridors, development requirements, access egress, one-way in, one-way out, emergency access, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it kinda muddies the water when you start thinking about subdivisions. So I would take that off of your mind, but I would really more focus it on an, an individual piece of land that's being purchased and a building application, a building permit is being requested from that applicant. That, that's really the, the issue we're looking at, subdivision kind of, for now. Subdivision kind of, for now, handles itself, and maybe Sandy has a different opinion or viewpoint on that, but we already have things in place for subdivision. To help with off-site improvements, to handle stormwater, to handle. It's these ones that are individual lots, where someone wants to build something new along something that's unimproved. Now, that's really what this specific code deals with. Just how do we want to handle it? Do we want to require half-street improvement, similar to how it is now? Do we want to redefine what that half-street is, to at least allow two lanes of travel, to at least allow for twenty-four feet of pavement, or more pavement abutting their property, at least enough to cover the shoulder? That's, that's really kind of where we're at right now, is what we want to require of them. We have something in place right now for deferral agreements and for that, um, special improvement, that's in our code. We don't have anything for recapture. Explore that if it needs the council back up, but it's really kind of what.
Your Honor. I don't mean to be monopolizing here, but I guess to me, it's sort of two different pieces. I guess to me, we need to look at the recapture. Shouldn't be included in with this water and sewer improvements and treat them all the same. I, I think we should seriously look at extending that out to a longer period of time. Five years, to me, just doesn't, isn't enough. Twenty would be a lot better. It's fine. And I think on the street thing, again, I think we should have them pave from the center of the road right away, their entire side and twelve foot on the other side, and I think that's, and give them a recapture ability on that twelve foot on the other side of the center. I think that would be as fair to everybody as possible, and it gets the city to where we have a usable street, not a half of a usable street, which is, I think, what we started discussion about.
Sir, I, I agree. I, I think my initial discussions with, with Mr. Butterfield and Mr. Weaver were strictly that right there, to, to help the city so that the city didn't get into the situation before, where all of a sudden we've got half a lane of traffic paved, and all of a sudden the city quote is being caught and saying, okay, now you have to pave the other half to make the street look nice, or to keep the maintenance up so that it doesn't break down. Um, and again, we had talked about a recapture type thing so that nobody got a free ride on that. Um, I realize it's gotten more, more complicated, you know, as probably as the, as staff has dug through the ordinance and stuff, but, but I agree with Mr. Bailey, I think as a minimum, we need to at least either redefine our definition of half a street to, quote, include that twelve feet on both sides of the center line, and, and, or whether you call it a three-quarter street, or whether you just want to define our half-street to say that's what our half-street is, but, but I think at least that as a minimum will, you know, helps the city so that we don't get caught back in that situation where you say, well, jeez, we've got, you know, a nice mile of road, but it's only on half the side, so as you're coming, going to school, you can drive on the pavement, but taking your kid home from school, you're, you're driving on the dirt. So, and I think that's what we were trying to avoid initially.
Does everyone agree with that synopsis?
I, 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 I think maybe we have some consensus, do we? That what we're really talking about is, 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 is two lanes of traffic on either side of the center line. So that takes into account whatever requirements we might have for the construction of that street, depending on where it happens to be. In some cases, that street may only be twenty-four feet wide. In that case, we're going to require full construction, but doesn't have curb and gutter. Okay? Someplace else, we're looking at a sixty-foot wide street, we're going to have to have twelve foot paved on the other side of the center line, so that we've got a full, a full opportunity for two-way traffic. And then, and then in that situation, the developer on the other side is going to have to come up with the balance of the street, plus the curb and gutter to match, to get the full width. But I think that's, isn't, isn't that what we've kind of, and then, and then the methodology there, it seems like maybe what would be wrong with having alternatives?
We, uh, Riverbend Development went in and, and purchased the subdivision behind, um, Adam Street, farther on down, and I'm not exactly where, and they, and the streets, the sidewalks, the curb were all put in because, uh, that's, that's how they developed it. And, uh, in fact, and it was such a long time between developments that they, the streets went to heck in a handbasket because the drainage was, somebody said about, you know, get the water off the road, or the road will turn to gravel. That was a great example. But in a subdivision, both sides of the property are being developed. Okay? So we're going to have a tw- twelve-twelve curb and gutter, no matter what. But on a industrial site, when we go down to, um, what's the street above you? Sorry, my brain's, um, it's not major, but, um, runs east and west down to this.
Park.
No, no, no.
Big Bend? Big Bend?
Not your house, your gas station, the main, major one that we get to the water station from. Monroe.
Monroe.
Monroe, that is all industrial, and there are huge spots in there which are commercially possibly to be developed on one side or the other. In fact, there's, um, uh, three-quarters down the way, there's a small subdivision in the street, and the houses are only on one side of the street, and I look at that and I think, that's peculiar. You can wind through that and take that street and end up over in Adams. But what I'm trying to say is, that would be industrial where one side would be developed and the other side wouldn't be. But that makes no sense for the engineering, or the cost, or anything. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to, to go in and carve out a road.
If you're not going to use both sides.
If you're not going to use both.
But there, there could be the opportunity where, let's say, I have forty acres and you have forty acres, master plan says there should be a street right down between the middle of us.
Yeah.
I want to develop and you don't. That means I have to put in the street, both sides, even though half the street's on your side. I would have to pave that street, but then if you decided later to come in, you'd have to do the curb and gutter and, and whatever, parking lane or whatever, and.
I get a free ride.
Well, but not if my recapture goes through, then you're going to have to pay me back, which is how it ought to be.
That's correct.
For the twelve foot I put on your side.
Way it should be.
Yeah. And, and again, we've had trouble in the past getting people to put streets on section lines just for that reason, because they're, well, there's no street on the other side, so I shouldn't have to do my street on my side. So this would help us accomplish that goal, which is to keep the streets going through on, on the section lines, for example, all the way through, so we have a collector-type of street. If not, they just want to put a street into their section, they don't want to have a street for anybody else, and.
Your Honor, one more. When I was in Canada, in Alberta, the streets are miles apart, and they're on section lines. And that, that allows you, that allows the prime to develop, that allows easy access, that's the way it should be. To just, just allow people to develop one side of the street.
I think we're all on the same page there.
Yeah.
Trick becomes is, when I'm the one who doesn't want to buy the street, I still got to put the money up.
Okay, so recapture, you go back thirty years ago, what did it cost to pave the street? And it, so if we, if we, so if we've got an escrow fund, and we, and we put money into that every year for every lot, okay, then the de- developer is putting in money every year for every lot until he goes bankrupt. Okay? And then the, but, but then you've, you've built this escrow fund based upon what that cost to build the road in nineteen eighty, and today it costs four times the money. So then your escrow fund is seriously underfunded unless we have some way to readjust the payment to compensate for inflationary cost.
And, Your Honor, that is a legal challenge. I've spoken with a few planners on that, and that is one of the primary issues when you do a fee-in lieu, or you do a delay agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much have to charge the developer at the time that he does his onsite improvement, the cost of the offsite. Twenty years later, inflation alone makes that investment.
Ridiculous, yeah.
But.
Has to pay the difference.
And the city does have to pay the difference, and there have been some legal issues around trying to charge inflation, or try to add to that original cash investment.
So that's why, that's why requiring the one guy to, 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 to do it upfront, and then giving him the opportunity to recapture, plus interest maybe?
Take some sting out of it.
Right. So then he's made it, he's made an investment that will pay him back, plus a service on his dollars.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, so we, we've, haven't, haven't, do we have guidance for staff?
So we would need to investigate what our ability, how long we can do the recapture, and whether we could put interest on it, for example.
Mm-hmm.
And just the wording and how we would word this, so that it's saying twelve foot on each side of center line, plus, so.
The only other addition I would make, because I think you are providing very clear direction, is right now, if we just redefine what a half-street is, I'm consistent with what you say, it's only contiguous to the frontage of that current property. Have to provide language as well for anything outside of that. And Sheridan, I, I provided that in the staff report, Sheridan has kind of a blanket statement in their code system that says pursuant to the planning commission, the city council, there's its public work. If the impact caused by the individual lots development is excessive, there's a nexus to be made between the impact and the required maintenance, then you can go and require outside of the property line.
So that brings in the extending it from the la- the, the existing services to the uh, far side of your property line, kind of a scenario.
Correct. So we would have to put verbiage in for that.
I, I think that needs to be there. So we don't have an Aspen School scenario again. Anywhere, it needs to be to the farthest point of your property line.
Through, yeah, through your property.
To my driveway, it has to be to the end of my property line, because we get those scenarios.
And that's what we got with Aspen, was they would pave one half of the street to the footprint of the school.
Right.
Not to their property line.
So whoever developed the next piece would have had to bring it all the way from half of their property.
Right. But then they were outside the city, and then they come back and say, no, in excess, we want water and sewer.
Yeah. And originally, they drilled their own well. Because they didn't want our water.
So have we got, um, and, and it's kind of hard to say this just applies to the School Facilities Commission, right?
That might be tough legally.
Yeah. Okay. But, but it's, so that, I guess that's the only other problem that I see, is, is, is to get the language in such a way that it applies, you know, uniformly across all kinds of development. So that, our, our work is done, your work begins.
Sards. That's the fun part.
All right? Is there any, uh?
One last thing.
Mr. Larson.
With that, with that, uh, half-street, uh, is there another way of naming that? I mean, half-street means, means, uh, the middle of the street to my property, and I don't like that, because that gives, that gives somebody a misnomer. I want, I want something that says that you're going to have twelve-twelve, and you're going to have some type of curb and water, and it's going to be property lines, but it's not going to be, obviously, twelve and twelve is twenty-four, plus, it's more than a half of a street. I want, what, what about my businesses that customers drive in and they're driving out? They drive on the same half-street?
See? So I, so I think, I think the idea of half-street, or simply defining what a half-street is, it needs to be called something different, too.
We can definitely do that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Even three-quarter doesn't necessarily do it, because what we're, it, it isn't really a percentage.
I would probably remove three-quarter, half-street, and just do off-site improvement or street improvement.
Okay.
That would make it less convoluted.
Are we done with this? Okay, the other item that's on the agenda that we added is the, uh, uh, under Mayor's comments, is that we've been invited, the city's been invited to participate in a recognition dinner for Rich Hart at the Modelers Park at, uh, twelve PM on, is it on Fri- Friday? Or is it Saturday?
It's Saturday.
It's on Saturday.
Saturday, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay? And so, you know, Rich Hart was instrumental in building the Modelers Park, and so they're going to have a party out there, and it's mostly going to be modelers, but they have invited the city to participate, and, you know, the city actually has the lease with the owner farm for the Modelers Park, and then we release it back to the, to the, to the modelers. And, um, and so we're all going to be down to lamb, or out of town, or, and so I'm just wondering if there's somebody, it's noon on Saturday, if there's somebody on council that can go there and wear their name badge, city council, say, hi, I'm here. Will you do that, Kyle? Thank you. That's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
One, Your Honor.
Oh.
Um, I had one, I know where, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, we, we've all had thousands of gallons of water put on fair land, and the property above Holiday Inn has received its fair share. Um, and there's other properties, but I, I just feel that with email, phones, that giving somebody ten days to respond to cutting grass is, you know, is beyond, uh, beyond reasonable. I mean, if you were an assistant manager or manager at a property, you had a plugged toilet, you would not take ten days to respond to unplugging the toilet. Being a good neighbor is part of our responsibility to make our town look nice. Ten days to wait to do something, correct something is just too much. With modern, if we were writing letters and didn't have the internet, we didn't have phone, we smoke signals and the wind is blowing around, ten days, okay, but. They're cutting it, I saw that, but the code says ten days.
It does. And, Your Honor, I mean, we have, our code states that we have to send them letters, we have to give them ample opportunity to, give them due process to do that. I mean, we could look at moving it from ten to seven, but I, I, I can't think of going much lower than that, because.
That's not my point.
What's the point?
My point is that we all are responsible people, and certainly.
We're not, though.
Well, that we're going to be.
[laughing]
We're, we need the language to say that an onsite manager has to get off his butt and is responsible for the care and secure of that property. And to act ten days because it says so in the mail, and the owner is somewhere other than onsite, is ridiculous. It's our cake. I mean, it's a military, it's not for a place where we do service.
Is there, thank you. Okay. The only question that I have about that is, you know, what might be required from the standpoint of due process? You know, you have to give people notice, and, and so there's a certain amount of time that has to go by, maybe statutorily, or court-recognized, to say, this is enough time. recognized to say, this is enough time. I don't know where the ten days came from, maybe they just said, well, ten days.
Your Honor, being devil's advocate, if you had to hire somebody to come do something like that, a lot of times these days, if you, if you had, had to have the toilet professionally done by a plumber, not picking on the plumbers, it's all the trades in the area. Sometimes you can't get somebody there in ten days, sad as it is. Or if you had to hire a company to come mow that, that might be challenging. So I, I, I understand your point is that, yeah, you doing your front yard probably should, ten days is gobs plenty. Sometimes some of these things take a little longer. I'm not saying that is an excuse, I'm just saying.
No, that's not.
If, if they're going to respond, they're going to respond and.
Oh, yeah, but my point is, that's our cake. But here's the other side to that. I own an equal size of property. I've been out whacking weeds and my, and my lawnmower blew a, an injector on it and I have to get the injector, I've looked all over the United States, it's coming from Japan and it's going to take ten days.
There you go.
To get it here before I can get it even repaired. So, because what I'm just trying to say is, the owner would say, he needs something that says, we're going to get after it and make that binding, that's all.
Your Honor, we, we can look into the, the days. I, I know they'd already looked at a few other cities. Ten days seems to be a fairly normal amount of time, but that's something we can look at and, and see how much process we need to give them legally.
Still have a motion on the table.
I second.
And second.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.